Burns?
Yes.
Shartrun?
Yeah.
King?
Here.
Calzer?
Here.
LaChose?
Here.
Lehman?
Here.
Marahan?
Here.
Mosher?
Here.
Osborne?
Here.
Dahha?
Here.
Please stand in case of flag for the club.
By the means to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Report of the Finance and Rules Committee for Rule Six, Terry.
The Finance and Rules Committee has met and they recommend to waive the rules to act upon late resolutions this evening.
Need motion? Second by round, any discussion? All favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Privilege of the floor, I'm gonna save that till the end after we have this discussion. If anyone has a comment at that point, they can offer it, but I think it's premature to try to do that now. So, reports of standing committees. Any standing committee have anything they'd like to report on? If not, we'll move directly into the discussion. So, Jerry, would you like to have discussion on the building process off?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and stuff. Been talking lately and running. I think we need, I want to do due diligence to where we're gonna end up, if at all. So, I guess one of the questions is that we need to bring up for discussion. You know, there are some points, if the building goes downtown, potentially it could help with development and this and that. So, that's something that we need to look at and discuss. You know, where we've talked about before, there's questions that we have on the existing design that Rick tags here to answer. But after our discussions and stuff like this, what I would like to do is kind of give a consensus whether we're willing to. One of the questions has come up, I'm open for it. However it shakes out is what we're gonna do. Maybe we wanna scrap the building we have and redesign it. See what the cost is to do that or start over completely. It's just an option. The other thing we need to kind of figure out is that potentially we're sitting right now at twelve point five million is what we feel we can do one for. One of the things is, and I'm not sure because it's changed, do we wanna downsize it a little bit regards to where it goes? So, we're gonna start this discussion, I don't know. I think I've covered everything. And hopefully we'll get an idea of what direction the majority of people want to go tonight so we can start doing something. And the thing is, if we can't get a kind of rough decision, what we'd like to look into, because there's probably gonna be questions tonight that we can get answers to by when we have our committee meeting and stuff and kind of keep plugging along on this so we figure something out. Because the study hinges, if we do the building, it solves a lot of the problems. And if we don't do the building, then we got other problems. So, I think the biggest thing is, is where the majority of people feel it should go. And if it's gonna cost more money to downsize it and put it elsewhere than the price tag we have to build it, are we willing to spend a little extra more to get it right? So, that's what we're gonna start to.
Yeah, I agree with everything pretty much that you said. My thinking is, we're in the process where we're gonna decide to build it or what have you. I think the first question we should ask ourselves and get some kind of understanding on is how many of us want to build a new building? If there's a majority of us that don't wanna build a new building, there's no sense in sitting here tonight wasting their time. And then secondly, if there's enough of us that do wanna build a new building, I think we need to have a price. We're willing to do that too. And then go from there and do what you said, do the discussion.
Yeah. Anybody else while we're talking and stuff like that?
Well, I guess I would say I personally oppose us to using the eight-year-old drawings in that project. I think we should start from scratch.
Okay. I mean, we'll discuss it and stuff like that. So, I guess the first thing are, we've been interested in the building and what, anywhere's, and what would be the limit that people will, if we incur more of a cost than this, are people willing to do it? So, can we get something there?
I feel as well, why should we spend more than the twelve point five we were estimated to spend to begin with?
Well, I mean, it's just looking at different options and see if we feel it's right. There's ten of us that make this decision. And I mean, we need to give it a fair shake, so we need to discuss it. When we vote on it, then we make our decisions. So, we have no idea which way it'll go. I mean, we don't even know if there's enough votes to do anything.
Well, then let's make a motion if we wanna build a new building.
Yeah.
I mean, I make a motion, how many? I make a motion to build a new building.
Do we have a second? I'll second it.
So?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Well, hold on a second, is there any discussion on that? I, I would agree that we need to do something. But, you know, I think before we decided we need to build a new building, we need to look into exactly what the options are. I think since the time that this building was designed, our needs have changed, our visions have changed. We recognize that we have other infrastructure issues that need to be addressed also. So, instead of jumping right into deciding whether we're gonna build a building or not, I think it would make more sense to try to form an ad hoc committee or something like that, get some input from the community, legislators, department heads, and see what the current feeling is on what the community thinks, which way we should move forward. My thought, if you would like to go on this.
Chairman, we tried to commit, to form an ad hoc committee four months ago. The group of ten wanted to do it as a group of ten. So, what's the sense of even going down that road?
Personally, I feel the reluctance to move forward with this is the fact that a lot of the legislators weren't comfortable with the current design and we're sort of dragging their feet because they weren't sure that that's the right answer.
Well, my motion is just to move forward, to move forward with the process. We don't have to decide on what design. But I think what, instead of wasting our time and wrapping our gums for the next six months, whether or not we're gonna change designs or go with what we have, let's make a decision that we're gonna move forward in one shape or form, that we're gonna commit ourselves to build a building. I don't care what it is. Let's make a commitment now so we aren't dragging our feet like we've been doing.
I'm not trying to drag our feet, I'm trying to make sure that whatever we do.
Well, we are, Chairman, we are dragging our feet because we never discuss it.
Well, and that's it. We've spent time for informational meetings and this and that, it's not a rush. I mean, the big thing is, are we gonna build the building or not, or even ascertain building the building? And I think that's one of the things we need to figure out. I mean, the building, and I, if people wanna change it, whatever the majority wants to do, I have no problem with that. But on the same aspect, we're sitting at the same building as okay X amount of years ago. Yes, it's changed. But one of the questions is, if we downsize it ten percent, is it gonna cost us more than if we built the building the way it sits? Because I think we have discussions that we, my thing is, is that if we build exactly the same size or we go down, are we gonna incorporate everybody in the building? Or are we gonna leave DMV where some people think it ought to be and this and that? So, I mean, I do think we need to start the concept of building. And, you know, if we can get the ten, or a small group with legislators and stuff like this, to move it forward, or all ten. But what we've had is meetings and we don't make any decisions. And if people have a problem with it, let's discuss it and correct it. That's what we're here for.
I agree that we should move, continue to move the process forward and study the issue. I'm not sure that in that process, we will either build a new building or we may get by with renovating an existing one. So, I guess to your motion that we're gonna move forward and build a building, I would be more comfortable if that were, that we're gonna move forward and study the process and try to figure out how to fix it.
Yeah, that's fine, whether we wanna renovate or not, I don't care. If you wanna phrase it that way, we can do it.
What are we renting?
Well, potentially it'd be the old DSS building. You know, thirty-year-old building and stuff like this.
Well, it's at its life and it's gonna cost us more to renovate than it is to, I mean, it makes logical sense.
Well, I mean, it's, it's for discussion, so, I mean, if we.
We can discuss that, but we still need to know, is everybody in favor of? It's pretty simple, are you in favor of building a building or not?
Some type of, yeah.
Simple. That's all we need to know. Then we know at least that the majority is in favor of building a building. Then we go through the process. If renovating is what everybody decides in the end of the process, then we renovate. But if somebody wants to go down that path, it seems, you know, I don't know why, but it doesn't make sense to me. To renovate a thirty-year-old building.
I'm gonna go on record saying I'm not in favor of moving forward without public input.
Correct.
Well, that's part of it. I'm not gonna commit to.
And that's part of it.
Saying.
We have public ears.
So, go to the ad hoc committee setup is what I'm meaning.
But we tried that though, and everyone, everyone wanted to be involved. We did, and we tried an ad hoc committee amongst the legislators. We didn't talk to the community or departments. Okay, so what are we gonna do? Create an ad hoc to involve the community, department heads, and the legislators? We were put in here to office to make decisions. Yes, we take the community's input and we bring that to the rest of the ten of us. But we were elected for a reason.
Have we got any input from the people yet on this?
I haven't heard anything negative about it, and it's been in the news, so.
And the thing is, how can we have any input when we don't know what we're doing?
That's right. You gotta have something to present to the community.
You gotta have something to present.
And if they don't like it, then we hear from them. Then we hear from them.
They hear a problem, then we change it around again, so.
The people in my.
Well, I can tell you this, excuse me.
Andrea, go ahead.
The people in my district are not in favor of a new building, from the comments that I've heard.
I was at a meeting last night coming down, Eric Stansfield against it.
Okay.
I was at a meeting up in Harrisville last night, brought it up, the price tag and, everybody was in favor of it, everybody. And these are older people that are retired.
I was at Karen last night and everybody was in favor of it.
Same way down in the southern part of the county. I mean, I think a lot of it, we gotta get the facts out. I mean, a lot of people are reprimanding, their taxes are going up, it's gonna be this, that, and everything else. And, you know, everyone sitting here is not gonna do it. We can build it with windmill money, which is what we agreed to do before for infrastructure. And the thing is, is that it does not cost taxpayers anything. And that's the right thing. The thing is, if we use it wisely to do the stuff we need now, and we build a seventy to a hundred-year-old building that'll last that long, we have something that's gonna keep giving back. If we frog around, eventually we're gonna have to do some stuff. And we may not be fortunate enough to do what we need to do on the windmill money, it's the taxpayers. Now, think back on this, we did it on, announced. Built courthouse, we used windmill money to pay for that, that wasn't an increase to the taxpayers. We built the radio system, which we paid five point one million for that, it wasn't an increase to the taxpayers. And we can build a new building that fit our needs, modernize and streamline because the way we're going, spread out all over the county, it's costing us a lot of time, maintenance, plowing, and everything else. And I think these are some of the things that we've only got left, that we can help the taxpayers in the future. And the bottom line, I would not vote for a building if we, if we gotta go to the taxpayers' front. And so, the thing is, is people are saying this, that, and everything else. But until we know what we're doing and can present it, how do they know they're against it?
I agree with that a hundred percent. We can say or talk about it, but you gotta make a commitment. And then you form your committees. When you can take stuff back to them, say, this is what we're looking at. You ain't got a price tag, 'cause we don't even know what we're doing.
We don't, that's it. We don't know where we're gonna end up. When we downsize the building, we're up in the air. So, how can you present anything to the public? The only thing I can say right now, we took the building we had X amount of years ago, thirteen, so it was six years ago, turned around, it's exactly the same building we're starting with to see where we wanna go. So, that's the best presentation we can do. But we've got a lot of property sites. The big question is, and, you know, if the legislators are willing to spend, I'm not convinced that we can take and start changing this building, whether we downsize it or not, and stay at the twelve point five price tag wherever we build it. So, the question is, is we need to make some of these decisions. Are we willing to bump it up to thirteen or fourteen million dollars that we are willing to invest in it to put it in the right place? Whether it's downtown, whether it's up in the hill, or this and that? Or do we wanna just hodgepodge the stuff together? These are the discussions we have to have.
We had a projected, new building projected payment, you know, back in March, using a fifteen million dollar.
Well, that's interest and everything.
That's everything.
Yeah.
With a three percent interest rate. You know, so we did, we do have some of that information, it's just, but is it, is it gonna work at that, or is it gonna be more? We don't know until we decide if we really need it.
That was based on us leaving it right where it was originally designed. So, if we wanna move it and the majority of people wanna do it, if they're willing to pay more, then I'm fine with that too.
But I guess, I'm not convinced that the design we got, that was rejected six years ago, that the design could go there.
It wasn't rejected six years ago, was it?
It wasn't built.
The reason it was.
It wasn't built.
The reason it wasn't built is because they decided we needed a radio system more and we needed a building. That's the only reason it wasn't built.
We put changes in, that, that building has room for dispatch.
Yeah.
Do we need room for dispatch? We don't know. You don't know that. Right, but I'm saying, we need, we need to review it further before we go further.
The thing is, if they get thrown out of there, yes, we do.
The only reason that they're in the jail right now, Thomas, is 'cause we begged and pleaded with the commission to corrections to leave them there because we didn't have space for them.
And there's only two, we're one of them, that's in that like that. So, potentially, yeah, we may not need it, but down the road, we're talking about another building to fit our needs.
So, then we're not sure what we need. Because we may need it, we may not need it. That's what I'm getting at, I think we need a little more review on it.
So, are you better off? So, there'll be more expense to hire people in the jail if we take dispatch up to a new building. You're gonna need more people, you're gonna need women, excuse me, you're gonna need women employed for the women prisoners. So, it's gonna be male and female that we would be hiring.
But the thing is, whether we want it or not, we might not have a choice.
You might not have a choice. The only reason we're there yet is because we begged.
But we really don't know, that's the hard part.
But isn't it better to build with the possibility that you might have to build a little extra space with that in mind?
I don't know. We built our house, but we can build it for ten kids, I don't know.
Well, if you would've had ten kids, would've you expanded it?
Probably. Or we'd have dealt with what we had.
Would it cost more to expand?
We would have lived with what we had.
So, that's fine.
We're hearing a lot of mikes, maybes, and possibilities.
Yeah, well, that's life, isn't it?
Well.
We operate, this whole world operates on the what if.
I mean, I guess what I'm asking is, if people wanna look at it, they're willing to spend more, let's have a vote on it, we'll go down and decide where we're gonna end up. We need some direction. I don't care if we redesign it, this, that, or anything else. We need to have a discussion and move it forward.
Gotta do something, you're running space.
And once we decide, then the public is where we take it to and ask for a thumbs up or a thumbs down. Because it's funny that the last time we voted down, a lot of people were disappointed because they thought we needed to build. So, I mean, I'm just asking to move it forward and start looking at this stuff, not just sit here and bump on the law.
So, your motion is to keep the process moving forward, form an ad hoc committee, and look into, to study the issue and find out whether we need to build a new building, renovate.
And if you're ad hoc committee, the thing is, I think the legislators need to be on what they're willing to spend, not have somebody put an ad hoc committee together and dictate what somebody else wants to build. I think we need to set a price frame.
So.
That's the second option that I see. First off, we gotta know what the motion on the floor.
Yeah, motion on the floor. Well, it sounds like they're changing my motion then, so. They're, everyone's changing it to what's my question.
What is the motion, Brad?
The bill. What was the motion? It was to make a decision whether or not we're gonna build some type of building for our, our space needs.
Do you second it?
I second.
Any further discussion? We have a motion on the floor, roll call, Terry, please.
And this is whether we wanna move it forward or not.
Burns?
No.
Shartrun?
I wanna see us go with the building. So, my understanding of that motion, I'll vote yes at this time.
King?
Yes.
Calzer?
Yes.
LaChose?
No.
Lehman?
Yes.
Marahan?
No.
Mosher?
Yes.
Osborne?
No.
Dahha?
No.
Vote is one, two, three, four, five to five, so the motion is defeated.
Well, we, we don't, we don't.
We can call the meeting.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, well, you're sitting around.
I'll second.
So, we do nothing.
Well, I'm thinking, you know, we have a motion to.
Nobody wants to move it forward, so it's done. I'm not discussing stuff.
You got voted down, now you have to build a new building. The only option you have now is to discuss whether you're on or renovating or rent your space.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the motion to adjourn is not for discussion.
The motion to adjourn is now what?
It's on the table and it's not for discussion, it's a vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Mr. Chairman, you did, you did delay the ability of the public to comment. And perhaps that should be taken into account in the motion.
Comment, even though we have voted to adjourn, so.
Listen, we gotta do something with the adjourn motion.
I was gonna say, are you withdrawing your motion to adjourn then at this time?
I'm joining the comment, I'm gonna adjourn.
Okay, you're second? You're withdrawing, you're second?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, we'll open the floor for public comment. Anyone who'd like to make a comment, please come forward and state your name for the record. Yes, sir.
Well, Mike Strife, um, does the county, do we have money now to build this building?
Windmill money, yes, we do.
Do you actually have a catch to it?
You mean the total twelve point five? No, we have eight hundred thousand dollars that's available to us every year from the windmill money, which the windmill money is not supposed to be used to balance our budget every year.
Then where would the additional money come from?
That would cover the payment on a twenty-year bond, the way that we're talking, the way, the figures that we've gotten so far.
It keeps coming in, DSS will pick up, this is a quick figure. They're gonna take, if we built a new building that we're talking about, DSS will take, be seventy-five percent of the space and they will pay seventy-five percent of their space cost. So, in other words, right now roughly, don't hold us to the exact figures between what DSS would pay us on their share over sixteen years. It would be around three hundred and some odd thousand dollars a year. And the cost of the new building was in the seven and eight hundred range. Correct me if I got it, I can wait. So, the county share would be five hundred thousand dollars a year. So, we do have the money, it would not be out of taxpayers' pocket.
Did we borrow money from the hospital?
The hospital paid us back and gave us some money.
The hospital borrowed money from hospital, they essentially paid us back. Okay, so we did not borrow money from the hospital. We don't owe the hospital money, even though it's a county.
There is, there is an outstanding, there is a outstanding loan with the hospital.
Four hundred, we had borrowed.
We did, they chipped in. And the thing was, 'cause of the cost overrun for the building at JCC, because we didn't do due diligence on it. And the thing is, is that we could reach in our fund balance and pay that two million dollars off, and we chose not to. So, we really don't owe the hospital any money.
And the training center? Do we owe money on the training center?
What training?
The JCC? You mean JCC?
Yes. No.
The only, the only, the only outstanding building payment you have is this building here, which how many years is left? The courthouse.
Lots.
We have probably twenty.
Yeah, we restructured that, what, five years ago, right?
Two thousand eight.
Yeah, two thousand eight.
Everything else that we had under the sheriff's department's paid for. And the only thing we owe is this one building.
Okay, so moving forward, it sounds it is possible to build this building and not cost the taxpayers a pile of money.
Not any.
No, well, I mean.
Any is a strong word.
Yeah, any's a strong, it's costing money because the windmill money's coming from the state and it's coming from the federal though. So, so, yes, I mean, but directly, right directly out of our land tax money here in Lewis County? No. That that payment would be fully out of the windmill pilot.
I see the public not understanding this whole process. And coming here tonight, for a few minutes I've been here, there seems to be a lot of disagreement amongst the legislators over just how to move forward. Doesn't seem to be any concrete dollar signs or estimates or, or anything like that of exactly what the building's gonna cost because we don't particularly know if we need a larger building, a smaller building, what's gonna work. And the other part of that is, DMV moved. I mean, are we leasing the building down there?
Yes.
How much does that cost?
Nineteen hundred and ninety.
You know, it'd be nice if the public knew this. I, I do read the meetings and I read what, what's in the newspapers. And I just can't find this information anywhere. And what other organization in the county is also leasing or renting?
Board of Elections is leasing from the com, from Transitional Living Services, who owns the commons. So, those are the.
And, and we moved out, obviously the agent, 'cause we had a little space up there.
DSS is up there.
So, they would've been paying rent if we didn't have space for them. And we can, that building's sitting right there. And putting it back up in the hill where it was originally designed for, with better and different, is twelve point five million dollars to build that building. Now, some of the questions that speak up fellow legislators, there's a question whether we got more space than we need and whether we wanna downsize. There's a question is that, do we want to turn around and put it down here in the village on some place or this or that? And how much more is it gonna cost to, to change these?
All these questions don't have any answers, and I don't see how you, as a board, you can move forward.
Well, see, the thing is, of the.
Until you have some of this information.
That's what we're trying to do tonight.
It's not put together.
That's how I was trying to do tonight, is to get it to move forward. Because to get answers to them questions, this gentleman that works for Burner Car, it's gonna cost us more money to get them questions. So, if we downsize the original plans by ten percent, they've gotta redesign that building. So, your footers, everything from the ground up has gotta be redesigned if you're gonna downsize that building ten percent. We have a few people that wanna put property within the village. So, that, on top of that, then now you gotta do studies, you gotta do your soil studies, you gotta do your bore samples and see what kind of ground that you're working with. Those are all things we've gotta spend more money on.
Another question is, are we enough up on Stone Street to build a new building?
Yeah.
Um, we put money in a parking lot and lighting.
Yeah, but.
What, do you wanna get rid of all that by moving the building somewhere else?
No, the building's gonna be right next to the PSB building. That part of, parking lot can still be utilized.
That's what we're talking about, but there's other people wanting to move it elsewhere, so we gotta decide. That's where we're having a problem now.
But we want the public to bask it. You gotta give them some information so they can give you some input.
Well, that's what we're really trying to do.
I know you're trying to do that, but you're kind of.
Trying to move it forward, so.
Yeah.
I mean, if nobody can decide that they wanna build a building anyway, then it's really hard, it's really hard to know what the costs are gonna be until you say, yes, we're gonna build a building.
But it's just all questions, if you gotta get some answers to, get it out to the public.
Yeah, absolutely, you know, I mean, we have a lot of the answers.
And the way that building sits there, it's twelve point five million, sitting up on that location, and if we go anywhere else, I can guarantee we won't do it any cheaper. But there's some extra space up there, we're not sure what, so that's the big hangup. And we need to shrink it, if we bring it down in the village.
Oh, my God. And, and the building would be congested with traffic, I mean, it would be a parking problem too, if we brought it, brought it down to the village.
We, we have rough estimates, we have this piece of paper with all the properties that were presented to Bernie or Carr. We talked about this three months ago, we have twelve properties here. The cheapest property to build on was one piece of pro, well, actually, was a piece of property that we owned, twelve million dollars. That's what the projected cost was then, okay? To move to one of the other properties, which is out of the village limits, was thirteen point one nine seven million dollars. The two properties within the village were anywhere from twelve something up to thirteen. You know, so, and there's one in there for eighteen, so we had the figures there.
It's all good information.
That's all.
You gotta get it out to the public.
Well, I understand, but what's the sense of bringing it out to, to the public if we can't decide ourselves whether or not we want to build it? There's no sense of presenting it to you as, unless we know for sure here that we wanna move forward with that. And that's all that I'm trying to, that's all I was trying to accomplish tonight. And obviously, by vote and no, so it, it's a killed motion, so.
So even if we moved it forward with food and everything, we can't even do that and let you see everything we're looking at, so.
I think we had a consensus that we need to move forward on the process. Before we could get to that, we had a motion to adjourn, so.
Yeah, to adjourn. We got another one.
Yes, Mr. Jackson?
My name is Jimmy Jackson, I'm from down the southern end of the county. My take on the ways, I've been hearing it right here today, you gotta pile a windmill money, burn a hole in your pocket. I think it could be spent a lot better than a new courthouse or a new, new county office building. There's other buildings that need to be renovated in the county here.
Well.
And then, another thing, this was put up for a public vote six, eight years ago, and it went down in flames big time. The people don't want it. And if, uh, the consensus down on my end of the county, if it's put up for a vote again today, it ain't gonna fly.
Well, Fort Lyden seems to agree with it, and the town of Lyden, they're, were in favor of it and still are.
I'm from the town of Lyden, sir, and they're not.
Well, you're not at the town board meeting, it's gonna be discussed.
You can run me down, you can do whatever you want, I don't care.
And what we're trying to do.
It is not gonna fly down in the southern end of the county.
We need to do something with DSS, decide with, that's four point some odd million to renovate that. Then we're still renting all over the place, and we have no efficiency, so if you don't want it, that's fine.
What I'm saying is, if you got this windmill money burning a hole in your pocket, which it seems to be the way it is, you could use it a lot better than people in the county.
Well, we voted that the windmill money is only to be used for infrastructure, not run the day-to-day budget of the county.
Oh, there's other buildings that need to be fixed in the county other than building a new one.
Well.
What, what one?
That's, that's.
Are you talking to DSS?
This is part of it.
The highway department needs to be done something with.
Right.
The old extension building needs some money put into.
Which one?
That's DSS.
That's DSS.
Okay.
That's four point nine million dollars, and then we haven't solved our problem yet.
Uh, just throwing a bunch of money at a new building is not the answer. The taxpayers in the county already are hurting bad enough, now two guys trying to add more tax per, more tax to our tax burden. That's basically where I'm coming from.
Right, and what I was explaining to the gentleman up front here though, is that your, your land taxes aren't gonna go up with this new building. The windmill money will pay for that payment, okay? We can't use, you can't use this windmill money to balance our budget, because the windmill money isn't steady all the time, it, it dwindles, like, so the Maple Ridge is gonna dwindle over the next twenty years. The new projects start out, but then when they renegotiate, that windmill funding drops, okay, through the pilot agreements. So you can't count on that, no different than we can't count on the sales tax revenue because it's up and down. You can't balance your budget with that. DSS building, which you're saying cooperative extension, that's, we did the space study in our, 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 um, campus needs, that is number one priority, highway department's number two. DSS building is number one priority to renovate, to renovate is two point, six point five.
Four point nine.
The, four point nine of us?
The renovate that thirty year old.
And that's without the money from the state.
Yep, and that does nothing for anybody else that doesn't have.
And that doesn't solve the rental space we have with the commons, where the Board of Elections is, is waiting measures there too, you say, right? And then we're renting DMV, which we just moved in, so.
All right, you're saying that the taxes aren't gonna go up?
Your taxes will not go up with the windmill money funding this project. Your taxes did not go up, what's happened?
You're a firm believer that the sun came up in the west this morning, I'm sorry.
Well, nothing is guaranteed in life, sir.
I mean, what, what we've done so far, sir, with the, uh, new courthouse that we were forced to build, it was thirteen million dollars, and the tax, we used windmill money, and we've never had a tax increase to pay for that building using the windmill money. And I'll give them the figure exactly what it is, Mike, don't hold me to this, but I would say seven to eight percent that if we didn't have that windmill money and were forced to do it, so by using the windmill money, we saved you in your taxes, a levy on them to pay for that building. We build a radio project for eleven point one million dollars, and we used five point one of the windmill money, so your taxes didn't go up because of that. The only thing we've raised on taxes is day-to-day business of the county employees raises and stuff that we need to do to maintain these buildings. That building in the windmill was no taxpayer dollars, and this building, we do everything we could to make sure it's no taxpayer dollars to. Because if I gotta raise your taxes to build a building, then we're gonna do something else. But my feeling is, if we do it right, it's gonna be when the windmilling stuff peters out and we don't have this, it's gonna be money to give back to you people because we built in, infrastructure now. We don't have to tax you to build the infrastructure we didn't build.
Is there any other public comments? Motion on the floor to adjourn, put it in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?